Hi and welcome to this episode of Salt and Light. Today's episode is a live recording of a Q and A with Cowlets County Commissioner Rick Dahl, as he talks about the role of the county commissioner in Cowlets County. Enjoy. All right, well, tonight we are looking at the first real local part of government. We looked at the federal, we looked at state, and now we're kind of homing it down, honing it down here on the local level. So one of the biggest of the small, so to speak, would be the county. And so this is Rick Dahl, he's one of our three county commissioners. And he's going to give us some insight in how the county operates and what the county does and what the county doesn't do. And I would love to have some questions in regards to that later as well. So but Rick, how did you decide to run for commissioner?
Oh, that was a, you know, that was a little bit of a process there. It started with the whole COVID thing. I was probably my last two years at the job and then COVID hit and I was dumbfounded at the compliance that people just showed for something that really never made sense to me to begin with. And when I was watching that, I couldn't believe that Americans had gone to the point where they just blindly followed. And so I felt like there's something I needed to do. I didn't know exactly what to do. I, you know, I've been around politics, I PCO, did different things, but it was never desired to to sit in an office or a chair anywhere. I was getting ready to retire. I have a house in Idaho I wanted to go to. I'm a motorcycle guy. I like to travel around on that. So it wasn't a thing I wanted to do, but it just seemed to keep getting put in my face, you know, it just, and I'd have discussions and try to reason my way out of it. And then it would just keep being put in my face. So I finally took the stubbornness out and said, okay, I'll travel that path and I'll do the best I can and we'll see what happens. And so it just, it just felt like I was, I was told this is, this is the path I want you to take at this point in time. And so we did. And, you know, what was interesting is I'm not your type A personality. I don't run around and I don't, people I know I enjoy, but I don't have to have a huge number of friends. So when I made that decision to do it, all of a sudden I had these people coming up and just being put in the path. I had a gentleman by the name of Tim Shea, and I didn't really know him at that point. He come up, he said, can I help you in this process? I said, sure. I said, what do you think about doing science? Well, I didn't know that Tim Shea would be, turn out to be the best sign guy in the world. You know, and I had, I call them the Cast Rock ladies and they're over there somewhere. They they promised it would be no tough questions, but these people come up and just started wanting to help. And we knocked more doors with these people. It just people came out of the woodwork. And, you know, I don't think there was a popular opinion that I would win that thing. We were, we were outspent three to one, four to one. We were running against a guy who I enjoy, I know, and I enjoy him. He born and raised in this area, had columns of endorsements. And I don't think there was popular opinion that I could win that thing, but I never get into anything that I don't think I have an opportunity to to do. And so that's kind of how it came about, Sam. It wasn't anything I looked for. I wasn't looking for the big C on the chest or anything like that. It just felt like I was being led down this path. And so I just obeyed, which is not always easy for me.
Yeah. Well, I love that story and I think it ties in very well with what we watched today about the duty. And instead of being a complainer, and instead of saying someone needs to do something about it, you said, okay, I'll do something about it. And typically messed up obedience. I love that. And, and it also shows the difference having a good teammate makes when you run for office. There's a lot of work going in. And I remember first time I got engaged trying to help someone get elected. And I just assumed that it was this well old machine that would do all the work. And then you realize that when you run, you need a good team around you and you need to make it happen because no matter what people say, it's really up to the individual on a local level at least. And you can go and knock on doors in our county. If you run for one of the state races or federal races, there's a whole lot of people to reach out to, but especially on local elections, having that team makes a huge difference. So commissioners run for, you're in office for four years and it staggers. So two commissioners are in one election cycle, then two years later you have the third one, which is yourself. So can you explain? We have three commissioners and three districts. And how does that work in regards to the primary and in the general election?
Yeah.
And we have a slide for, for the districts.
It show how the districts are made up. Districts are, what they, the attempt is that each commissioner represents relatively the same number of citizens of this county. District three is the green one there, which is the largest because it involves Toodle, Cast Rock, Borning Rural areas. It runs out to Stella and a lot of different areas. And that's District three, the one I represent. District one.
Two is the city of Longview.
Cities, District two is the city of Longview, the blue. And then District one, you're like Woodland, Clama, that whole side there. So that's how, in the primary, only the people within your district vote. And then the people that come out of the primary in the general, then the whole county votes.
So you could have a ton of people running for, in the primary, I think like Longview had, what, six people last?
Yeah.
In District two, and then out of those, the top two goes through and then out of that, then the whole county votes for the last two.
Right.
So.
The district gets picked the two that they'd like to see in the general. And then once you're in the general, the whole county decides who they want representing their county.
And you have to live in the district you're running for, correct?
Correct.
Very good. All right. So what does the county do that the cities won't do? Because we have, you know, the cities and was it five cities in our county, the main ones? And obviously they have their own city governments. So the county, of course, covers the area outside of that. But I'm sure there's some areas that overlaps with the cities as well. So in a summary, what would the county government do that the city government does not do?
Well, we don't, we kind of oversee more of the whole the picture. We don't, I try not to get too involved with the cities. It's to the point of telling them what, what to do. I, I have, they've come to know that I attend a lot of their meetings and basically, but the reason for that is I just trying to get an idea of what they're dealing with. And if there's something I see that we can overlap with the county and help. There's been a couple of things in Kelso, for example, they had a park they wanted to redo and make it and make it disability accessible. And we were able to help with that or, or in, they're working on a senior housing project that we were able to help with that. Now, I think the county is just the more global thing of the, of the whole county. You really, it depends on who you talk to is what a county does. If you talk to the state, the state's going to tell you the county is just an arm of them and they're supposed to enact what the state does.
Gotcha.
Right? If you talk to the citizens, a lot of citizens assign more power to us than we, they really have. If, down to the point where if my neighbor's doing something and I don't think it's right, you need to fix it. Sometimes we're called to be the timeout police. And if you talk to me, what I'll tell you is my function is to preserve the rights and liberties of the people within this county. And that's the primary role that I try and serve. I really look at it as, as I think it was explained in last week's, you know, our nation was founded. God is our, he's number one. He's the one we're answer to. But in most countries, in most constitutions, it was God and then to the state and then the state assigned power to the rights to the people. Where you naked United States, our power, our rights come from God and they're inalienable and states and governments don't have the ability to take them away unless we see them. We, we tend to see them very easily, which is frustrating. But so I try, I try to protect that. I try to protect that order and realize that the people in this county is who I, I answer to. I'm, I'm the sentinel at the door, if you want to look at it that way, to, to try to protect those as best I can. So you probably get different answers depending on who you're talking to is what they want the county to do.
Yep. And I know from, from our experience together that you, you adhere to the limited government principle to stay out as much of our business as possible, but still be resonating.
But so it's, it's, I'll get, I talked about this a little bit on, on Friday. I'll touch in areas that well, I've said more than one time that people start talking to me about, well, it's an RCW or it's this. And just because it's a state mandate, they don't, they don't have authority to be not moral and not do the right thing. They have a duty to do the right thing, just as much as I have a duty to right thing. They don't get a pass on that just because they pass a law that says they, they can't. And so I've said more than once that I don't answer to the state. I answer to a much higher power than the state. And, and I've had a couple of times, I talked to group on, on Friday and I said, I kind of look at this as, and I don't like to use the, the old gunslinger thing, but it's, it kind of fits. I've been told a couple of times now, if I'd go against RCWs and then we get sued, that I'll be on my own, that nobody will, you know, the county won't back me. Well, I've got two notches so far. And so I'm trying to see how many notches I can get before I, before I'm done with this thing.
Good. So one thing that's different with the county versus the city government too, is that the commissioner is a full-time position compared to, you know, if you're running as a, if you're a city councillor, it's a very part-time. And it's a side responsibility, so to speak. So what does that day look like as a commissioner? What comes across your desk? What is, what are some of the issues that you're dealing with right now? And maybe that we need to know about and make our voice heard, fan or against and so forth?
Sure. Sure. Our days, well, the one thing I'll say, if we, we abided by the principles you heard tonight, I'd have a 10 minute job. But how it works now, we really, we try to be very open at county. On Mondays, we, we have workshops. Monday is really the day where we go over the agenda for Tuesday. So that's, that's the day we get our questions answered. We have department heads or whoever's putting that agenda together that we, we ask the tougher questions or try to delve into it so that it goes smoothly on Tuesday. So I always tell people, if you want to get an idea of what's coming up, or you want to hear more detail out of Monday is really, really the, the primary day to get that. On Tuesday is, is the workday, so to speak. That's where you're voting on anything that comes up that needs to be voted on, or, or you have resolutions, or you want to talk. That's, that's, public could talk in any day. We, I don't, I don't care, but Tuesday is the day that's donated is, is public comment. Wednesdays, we meet weekly with Public Works Group that Public Works handles all our roads and, and they handle landfill and they, it's a pretty big department. Plus Wednesdays is the day we try and put together any workshops we have. We had Department Ecology and we have Fish and Wildlife, they'll be coming in, I think in April or, or we start talking about budgets or it's just a day we kind of set aside for workshops if, if we, if we have them. And, and we talk about, one thing you got to know, because there's three commissioners, there's, they call the Open Public Meeting Act. So we don't have the ability to, everything we do has to be hashed out in an open meeting. I don't have the ability. It's not like Monday afternoon, the three of us sit around a round table and look over and say, this is what we've got coming tomorrow. It's not allowed. We don't have that ability. Two of us can't do that because two could make a decision.
Yeah.
So everything we do is hashed out in those, those meetings. That's why you're here, here, people talk once in a while about, they seem to get after each other once in a while. And I think it's better than it has been in the past. But that's, that's not anything unusual than, than happened when I was in, in the private sector, you know, in my career. We just hashed it out in a boardroom and then came out and it was already done. We don't have that ability. We hash it out right in front. You guys get to see the laundry, man. And some people like it or some people don't.
Yeah.
One of the things we have going, you asked me about a current thing that, that has my attention and I've, I've spoken to City of Cast Rock about it. I was down in Woodland and we have Councilman Hall from Woodland City Council. If you haven't met him, he's over here and you might introduce yourself. He's on Woodland Council. I was down and spoke to them the other day. We have a, a thing going along. It's called a tax increment area. It has my attention because what a tax increment area is, a county can do it, a city can do it, a port can do it. And at this particular time, we have a port looking at one and it involves 5,000 acres for a 25 year period. And what a tax increment area does, it was put together in Olympia in 2021. It gives them the ability on this property to, a lot of the, people call it revenue, but it's a lot of the tax receipts that come to the county to operate are property taxes. And then we also get receipts from sales taxes. Property taxes is probably a big one. It freezes the value of that property when the tax incrementary takes effect. So if it takes effect in, say, 2026, whatever the value of that property and, and whatever is frozen at that level for the entities it affects. And this tax increment area affects the county. It affects the city Woodland in a little bit, about 400 acres of it. It affects Cowlets one, our Cowlets Fire and Rescue. So it freezes what they get from property taxes on, on that value. Then as that value grows, if, if whoever's doing it, in this case, the port makes improvements and, and the value of those properties go, those revenues go to the port to pay off whatever they're doing.
Okay.
Now, the issue I, I have with it, it's going by the numbers that they use, it's $30 million hit to the county.
Wow.
16 and just the regular county funds, about $14 million to the roads. To the city Woodland, it's about $3 million. To Cowlets Fire down, down there, it's about $9 million. Their, Cowals Fire is actually under, this would be the third one they would be under. They're under one by the Port Ridge Field, by the city of Ridgefield. And this would be the third one and it would be a total of $70 million. Now, the theory behind it, I get the theory behind it. City of Vancouver has used it down, if you remember the old red line down in Vancouver and it had all kinds of issues and it was closed. And well, they use this type of funding to refurbish that and build new, but it was, it was a small piece. It was like a three to five year deal. This is much, much bigger. The theory behind it is they're going to develop commerce and it will replace those funds. I can't seem to make the math work on that yet. And I, if I can make the math, I, I would probably have a little more positive view of it. But it's, it's not a decision that anybody gets to make other than the port commissioners. They vote on it. Then it goes into effect. It's signed off by the treasury up in Olympia and we have no say. City Woodland doesn't have a say. Cowals County doesn't have a say. The fire doesn't have a say. The boulders don't have a say. And that's my biggest issue with it. If you're going to do what I view, in my personal view, as a backdoor tax, because these entities will try and make up that revenue one way or the other, and it's usually by a, a tax, then the ones that you're doing that to have to have a, have a say. You just don't have the ability unilaterally do that. So that's, that's my issue. It's not, I'd love to see commerce come in. I'd love to see the port do well. You just, I don't believe you can do it on the backs of the taxpayers without them having a say in it.
Right.
So that's an issue we're working with. And I met with one of their commissioners on, on Friday. Looking at having a workshop on, on Wednesday at 2:30. We're trying to get one of the consultants to put that together because I'd like to get some answers. They, Wenatchee has used it. Like I said, Vancouver's used it. And if there's history out there, then they should be able to give me some instances, is it really, is it really providing economic, is it, is it paying for itself or are you subsidized?
Right.
If it's paying for itself, I can, I can get with that. If it's a subsidy, then I have issues with that.
Right. Or the money benefits someone else other than the ones being taxed. So the only voice you would have then as a citizen would be to speak to those port commissioners?
Yeah.
And either then replace them next?
Any other voice I have in that actually is to speak to your commissioners or just what we call the bully pulpit. You know, I have the ability. It does give me the ability. Like I said, I went and spoke to Woodland City Council. I've talked to Cast Rock. Just to let them know that this is out there and this is my issues with.
Yeah.
And, and like I say, I, I don't want anybody to fail. I want them to be successful. It just has to be done in an ethical, moral way. I just don't think you can. To me, it's, 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 it's not moral to just have the ability to just take.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm sure glad with your background in banking, you're able to see these numbers and, and make sense and explain this to people because it's, it's important. And I love.
It's a big deal.
Yeah. And I love your heart to see that this is, you know, if we don't have a say in it, how can this just be unilaterally decided? So.
Not, not everybody's happy with me on, on that. Port Director, we had a spirited conversation.
Well, yeah, she'll win the numbers, right? It's in the movie, right? Show me the money, I guess.
And I tease about that a little bit. I don't care. I'm, I'm fine with people not agreeing. I usually tell people a disclaimer. I said, I, I work for you. So if, if that's the case, if I work for you, then it's my duty to tell you what I believe.
Right.
And to be honest with you. And so I'm pretty much an open book. I'll, I'll tell you my thoughts. It's your job to decide whether you like it or not. And you're always welcome to discuss it with me, but I, I don't, I don't really see the relationship between myself and the citizens as anything complicated. I'm here to tell you what I think. It's your job to decide if you like it or not. It's pretty, pretty simple relationship in my, in my book.
Yep.
And I think they all should be that way, but it doesn't, they're not all like that. Yeah.
And if they're not happy, they can take it up with you in
Absolutely.
Next year when it's elected.
And there's times, I, I'm not opposed to to changing my mind. If, if they can show me stuff and I can make sense of it, I've, I've changed my mind.
Yeah. And this is the beauty with local government too, that the voice we have sways so much more on the local level than it does many times on a state or federal level because we're literally dealing with our county. We're not at the mercy of Seattle or Olympia in the same way, even though indirectly we are because you're working with the state government. But I think that's why the local elections matter so much more because it impacts our day to day life. Many times even more than what comes out of Olympia or especially on the federal level.
Yeah. And we do have a little bit of control there. I, I don't, I have, I have a couple of tenants that I watch real close. One, one is taxes. If I'm seeing some, if there's pressure to increase taxes or there's pressure on taxes, that it, is, is it going to be a burden? Is it going to be neutral? Or is there going to be a benefit? What's going to come out of this? If, if it's, if it's the first two, then why are we doing it? I'm not going to place another burden. People are out here. It's, it's, it's an economic principle. I've been around long enough that money spent out of these people's wallets is much more effective than money spent out of government wallet. But let's be honest, it breaks government down into its simplest form, word transfer agent. We, we take from over here and we put over here. That's what we do. I used to, when I wanted to get my, you guys never knew my mom, but she was pretty much a spitball. Some, some of the times when I get fired up, that's, that's Ruth coming out, but she, she would, she worked for Department Revenue. She worked for Washington State for all the time. And when I wanted to get her fire up, I'd just tell her, Mom, you're just a transfer agent. You're just taking from, then we go, oh, 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 we do. But that's, that's the truth. That's the way I view it. We, we just, we, we don't produce anything. We provide services, services that really aren't meant to be provided. But it's just a taking from one and giving to another. You're not, it's not a productive thing, like you going out and doing a job and you're, you're, you're building widgets and you're selling them and you're, you're driving commerce. We don't, we don't really drive commerce.
Right. Government never
No.
Creates revenue. It just redistributes.
So the more, the more we can put back in the pockets out here to drive commerce, if you look back in history, it's always produced more.
Yep.
I mean, I, I was young, but I know Kennedy did it. I know Reagan did it. I saw the results of Reagan. Clinton kind of did it, but it was more of a Congress push than a Clinton push. And of course Trump in his first term did it. And, and it, it, when you spend, it drives much more commerce and it actually drives more tax receipts than if we.
For sure. One of the things that I noticed in the, in the race last year for county commissioner, one thing that came up was the idea of sunset clauses on taxes, which I love because it feels like any tax that it's, oh, we needed to fix this thing. And then, you know, 20, 30, 40 years later, that tax is still there. Or the, the road tolls that was meant to build a bridge at some point and then, you know,
Never.
50 years later. So just explain the concept of a, of a sunset clause on taxes and how that would work and, and how that would help
Yeah.
Solve issues because there's sometimes you need taxes.
Yeah.
Right. So how to shoot it in?
You're, once again, you're just going to kind of get my opinion on this. I think most, most every tax there should be, you shouldn't be taxed unless, as explained here, it's to pay for, for something. There, maybe you, you have some general, like we want, there's certain things that, that people want. They want safety. You want your police and you want those. So you can set up taxes for that. But if you're going outside of that box, it needs to have a limit. The one we sunset was the one they had to, they call it behavioral tax. And it was basically set up to get a program started. But, and I don't have, usually have a problem with that, but then the program has to become self-sufficient. It can't, it can't work off a subsidy forever and ever again, right? So anything like that needs to have a sunset. If it can't become self-sufficient in, in three to five years, then it needs to go away. And so I'm more proponent of, of sunset taxes. I, I, there may be a good argument, Sam, for me to impose a tax on somebody. I can't imagine what it would be. But there may be a good one out there. And if, if there was one that I would buy into, it would have to have an end date. It just would have to have an end date. As we just can't continually, if some, here's the problem with, with government. Unlike private enterprise, if you start something and it doesn't work, what's the first thing you hear? Well, we don't fund it. Take the education system. Let's be brutally honest with it.
Yep.
Education system. What do we hear? Well, our kids aren't, I was, in 1979, I graduated from high school in 1974. So I remember when, when Carter administration did Department of Education. And we were at the top of the, the world in our, in our system at that point in time. And the idea of course, is we want to stay there. So we'll hand it over to the feds and they'll make sure we stay there. Well, we've known how that's gone.
Yeah.
It's, it's tanked and it continues to tank. And, and what you hear is, well, we need more money for it. It's, it's tanked and it continues to tank. And, and what you hear is, well, we need more money for it. And if that doesn't work, what's the next reason why it didn't work? Well, we couldn't get enough money. Sometimes in private enterprise, you wouldn't do that. If it, if it keeps tanking, if I'm, I, I finished my career with fiber. I, I started their mortgage department and then I ran their retail operations. If we had a branch that you just couldn't make work, you just don't keep it going.
Right.
It just doesn't make sense. Well, in government, isn't that way. They, they don't want to give up anything. And so the, the cure is always throw more money on it. And that's, sometimes I say, you need to let things break to get them fixed.
Yeah.
And that takes, uh, not everybody's willing to let it break to get it fixed. I am, but I may be unusual in that, in that.
Well, you cannot run a business the way the governments run. If you have a product that's not working and not selling, you have to change tactics. You have to change it or you have to lay people off. There's a consequence. If you, if you try to do something that's not working, it doesn't work. You don't throw more money at it for sure.
It's our, I listened to this tonight and actually some of these principles I, I was, I was thinking about today. You know, they're absolutely right. Human nature, our, our founders understood human nature. Human nature's never changed.
Yeah.
We're, we're the same as it's always been. And they understood that and they tried to protect us from our own selves, basically, from what they knew that we would do. And we, we've let it, we've let it happen. And we need to reverse that. It's not an easy thing to reverse. But I, I'm an optimistic type of guy. I think you can, you can get there, but it takes a lot of involvement. You know, we, in weeks past, we've heard in Washington State alone, one and a half million Christians didn't vote. One and a half million?
Yeah. Outrageous.
Uh, you get half of them to vote, I could be elected governor.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So we need to get mobilized. We can change things. Just, just as Christians, we could change things.
Yeah.
We can do it. We just have to, uh, like they say, we have a duty. It's, it's not a sit back and, and he didn't mean you to just sit back and wait.
Yep.
No, you're here for a purpose. And, and we can do it. We just, uh, and that's why I've told you before, anything you need, because I appreciate what you're doing, anything you need, uh, that's why I'm sitting in this chair or anything else you need.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try, I try and help with that because I, I truly believe it, that, that we can make a difference. It just, it, it just takes, uh, us to get involved and to do it.
Yeah. Otherwise we, it is a self fulfilling prophecy. If we stay out of it, someone will make the decisions for us.
Yeah.
It's interesting. I, I was talking to someone who travels all over the country and they talked about, you know, the, the worst voters in America. I said, number one is the Christians. We're the worst voters to stay out. We're the worst demographic across this nation. And the second one, which was interesting was that it was gun owners. So those are the two worst. And what do we see happening in our state right now? We see all the, the second amendment rights are being attacked left, right and center. It, it's crazy.
The, the state is telling you, they need to give you permission to, uh, to have your second amendment rights. Are you kidding me? I mean, at what point do you just say, uh, no?
Yeah. Where do I get my, my, uh, first amendment permit?
Yeah.
Well, it's like, and I forgot to get a permit for, for having a church service tonight. No, this is what it is. This is literally what it is.
We, we may, we, we jest a little bit, but if you, if you don't stop it, they will take that.
Yep.
You know, I'm in a, uh, you know, I go to Timberlake and, and our minis group, we're, we're studying, uh, Bonhoeffer.
Yep.
In, in the Nazi regime and, and basically his take on the churches letting that, that happen because they were sitting back saying, it's God's will, the hills take care of it.
Yep.
And he's saying, no, you have a duty. And, and so it's been an interesting, uh, you know, discussion
Yep.
to have. And you can see the, you can see some of the hell, hell, hurdles. And it's just, I, I, I'm not a doom and gloomer, but I do tell you, you need to get up out of your seat and you need to do, you need to get involved and you can change, you can change the state in one election, just, just by us getting out and voting. It's that simple.
Yep. And you showed that when you ran for office. So how many doors did you guys knock on?
I don't know. I spent a lot of time with a couple of those ladies over there. Uh, Elaine's one of them and we knocked a lot of doors and, and we used to, we, every once in a while, you know, you get some, a lot of people were very courteous and then every once in a while you get somebody that wanted to have a, a conversation. I, I always told her, I'm surprised we weren't invited in for coffee because we just, you know, you get going and, and it made it, it made it worthwhile. It's, it's not a, I'm not a type A guy. It's not comfortable for me to walk down a neighborhood and walk up to somebody's door, you know, and, and do that. But every once in a while you hit a person and if you can make a difference there, you don't know what that, who that person tells, right?
Yep.
And I think that was probably one of the big reasons, uh, I ended up getting elected. I, I was just real true on my message. You know, one of the greatest compliment I've had since I've been in office is a, a gentleman come up to me, he says, you're exactly who you said you were. And that's the biggest thing anybody could say.
Yeah.
And, uh, you just, I, I don't know.
Yeah. But I think that's, it's, your story shows that the difference people make when they decide to, I'm going to be inconvenienced. Whether that's supporting a candidate I believe in, whether it's knocking on doors, whether they have that sign, show up to town halls, tell people about it and, and become an advocate.
Right.
Instead of sitting at home and, and now we don't even have to go to the voting booth. We can sit at a kitchen table and fill in a little circle, you know? And that's how we vote, vote. And then we think that's, now did my civic duty. That's the most basic of our duties and as we hear, the church doesn't even do that.
Yeah.
And, and then who is to blame for the culture being corrupt and being horrible? And, and, you know, John Stott said, you know, it's, it's not the fish that gets, you know, starts to stink that it, it's not its fault. It's because it was no salt to keep it fresh, right? And when there's no light, you don't bemoan the darkness, you just bring the light. Last time I checked, whenever I flipped that switch, there's no battle. The light comes on.
Yeah.
It's because we don't turn the light on. We, we're not that light. So so how can we, um, so what's the easiest way then to engage on the county level, uh, whereas currently? So tell us about your, your meetings and, and where you're at and how, how do people show up? But what do they do?
Well, uh, you can access us, um, different ways. We're always on Zoom and, uh, you, any meeting we have is a public meeting and you're always welcome to, to comment. I don't, uh, and I know many others do limit, uh, comments to three minutes or, or whatever, and have these rules on there that, uh, you're, you're to speak to the mayor or you're to speak to this and that. I have no such, I have none of that nonsense. If, if we serve the public and you want to come and you have something to talk about, I let you speak. If, if it gets to, and I don't put time limits on. Now, there's times when people kind of start getting down a rabbit trail and I'll, I'll, I'll peel it back. But uh, we're there to listen to you and to understand uh, what you think is wrong or what you think is, is right. And I all, we also, I say aye, but there's three of us and we all agree on this. You don't go to many other places where you get to engage, um, our department heads. And we allow you to engage our, our department heads. And, and the reason that we allow that is they're smart people and you should have the ability to know who's making a lot of these decisions and get comfortable that they know what they're, they're doing for the most part. And I think that's the case. Once you get a chance to talk with them and you get that comfort level, you realize that these people are trying to do, uh, the right thing. I only, the only conditions I put on that is we will have conversation. You don't get to yell at anybody.
Yep.
As long as you keep it civil and you have legitimate questions, I'll let them answer and we'll answer anything we can. You just don't get to come in and, and, um, be disrespectful.
Yeah. That's the most basic requirement, I think.
Yeah.
And, uh, it was interesting. So I had the opportunity to do the invocation a few weeks ago, which was an honor. And, uh, but the last time I went to a meeting before that, uh, unfortunately I have to say was years ago. And, and we had, it was like two hundred people that had opinions about, it was during COVID and, and all those things. Um, and, uh, I was kind of expecting the same amount of people, but it was way less. And, and I think for us as believers, I think it's important that we are engaged. We know the issues. But that we not only show up when we're against something. That if there are things that we stand for and we, we see the county do things great to, to call that out and support that as well. Um, but I think sometimes we fall into the trap. It's like, the only time we engage with county or city is when there's something negative and, uh, we have something to learn there, I think.
It's kind of, kind of human nature, right? We, we, if things are going well, we don't say much. If things are going bad, then we have lots to say. So it, it is kind of the nature of it, but, but you're right. You know, if, if you like something that is going, a little reinforcement just um, tells us that, hey, we want to stay on that path or, or if you see it, we like this, but maybe there's, you could look at this. I'm not a, we're none of us are opposed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's easier maybe for you to stand on your values if you know there's people that are holding, have, having your back and, and are encouraging that as well. So
Yeah.
Very good.
We, we just try to be real open. I, I don't, uh, there's not all three commissioners are very open to the public. We're, uh, as long as everything's respectful, we're, we're good. Uh, sometimes you get me fired up. I don't, uh, if I get somebody in, every once in a while I'll get somebody and it wants to grandstand a little bit. And then, then I might get into a little verbal sparring with them on that, but, but.
Very good. Um, a few, few thoughts that kind of, few questions that kind of tie into different, the same issues. So you have, um, the homelessness issues. What's this county's role versus the city's role? And then how you see it? And then also in regards to, um, how the jail, how that works for the sheriff's office or the county? And, and what role does the sheriff have in regards to, um, obeying or, or disobeying, whether it's the ICE laws as you see it, or, um, if or whether it's some of the COVID things. Uh, how do you see as a city, uh, sorry, as, as county, that we are to engage and, and stand for our, our citizens?
Yeah.
Values in those issues?
You know, uh, let's, let's talk homelessness first, you know, touch on
Yeah.
on the sheriff. That, that's, that's a tough one because I, I, you know, when, when Jesus was asked the two greatest commandments, I believe in those, you know, love your father above all else and, and love your neighbors yourself. And, and I think we're supposed to do that, but I, I really read it as individuals that, that we're called to help our neighbors when, when we can, or we, we have, uh, means to do that. We, we should help. I don't know. The trouble is we try to transfer that as people to the government to do it because we don't want to
Right.
do it. And I don't think it's a, a govern, I don't I don't think it's really meant to be a govern role and I don't think government does it very well. Cause a government a lot of times is driven by money. Well, we'll do this because we get, we'll get money from the state or we'll get money from the feds. And that's the wrong reason to do it.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of times they don't, uh, if I'm going to help some, uh, buddy, when my daughter came, came home, she graduated and she came home and, and, uh, she had been seeing a guy and, and she came home and she, she told us she was pregnant and she wanted to move back in and they were no longer together. I said, that's, that's fine. We will, we will help you, but you're just not going to sit in this house. You're going to have a plan and have a, have a goal. And she became a, uh, she went to school, she got a teacher certificate, uh, she got a master's, she now teaches at Battleground High School. And I think for, I think the same way you treat other people with that same respect. I'm just not going to give to you. I will help you, but I have some expectations.
Fine.
And we lack expectations a lot of times for, for the, these people. And I, and I actually think that's disrespectful.
Right.
I, I think they're, they're brighter than that and they're smarter than that. And if you ask nothing from somebody, you're going to get nothing. And so you need to have expectations. I, um, they have to be, make a commitment. And then I think we need to do as a people, uh, as best we can to, to help that with, within the means that we have.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, I always think about when Jesus is on the cross and, and one asks, he, of course he had the ability to read our hearts. I don't have that ability, right? But he had the ability to read their hearts and he knew the one, uh, he didn't turn to the other and say, I got a two for one deal going. You have to make a commitment.
Yep.
You have to have an action. And then I think it's upon us to help. So that's how I would deal with the homeless is, is I, we can develop a plan to help, but you have to develop a plan to how you get out of this too. On the sheriff's side, he's an elected official. So, uh, out of respect for other elected officials, I try to stay out of their business. If you want my personal thoughts on, on sheriffs and, and jails, I think sheriffs, uh, should be over jails. I think that's the line of work that they better understand than, than commissioners. Uh, it, there was a time in Callas County where the sheriff was over the jail. And I don't know the details of why that changed, but something obviously happened and the commissioners voted to put it under the authority of the commissioners. And that's how we sit at this point in time, but that's, that's not
The only.
to most counties. But like I said, I, our, our, our current sheriff, and I have a lot of respect for Brad and, and I don't, I try to stay out of his business. He feels it works well this way. And so I'll, I'll respect that. If I, if, uh, that office changes and another sheriff wanted to run in a different way, I'd certainly respect that too and, and, and try to make that, that happen. Uh, but my personal opinion is I think it would be better suited under, under sheriff, but I'm not going to force that issue
Yeah.
uh, on another elected official.
Right. What, um, what can we do as citizens to make your job easier?
Hey, you know, I had the ability and I'll, I'll tell you the same thing. By the way, I had the opportunity, all three of us did, uh, uh, and I told you at the time, it was on my bucket list and I was so excited to get to do it. We got invited to the pastors have a lunch on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
And, and we got invited to a pastor's lunch and I just go, wow, this is on my bucket list. I can't believe I get to do this. And I, and I'll tell, I'll say the same thing I, I said then, I think we need to, uh, you want candidates that, help us find candidates that, that, uh, do their job based on biblical values, not on man-made values. And so that's what I would tell you is let's vet people. Um, you have to find people that are, are going to take a biblical view, not a man-made view, because the man-made view is corrupt. It's, it's, it's you know, more than corrupted, a lot of verges on the evil at times.
Yeah.
So you have to have, uh, you have to be real strong in your biblical view and you have to have, uh, you need to find somebody with backbones of oak, not willows. Because you will be attacked. And, and you will become after for that.
Yeah. I think that's something I've seen in the last few election cycles that the animosity and the attacks you get for, for stepping into the fray, for being engaged, it's hard. And you need to have that support structure around you and the people who can, can help you walk through that. And, um, and when, when there's people that are stepping up, we as believers should get behind and support the candidates we, we, we agree most to. And I think that's the beauty with the primary because you have a bigger chance to impact in the primary because first of all, way less people vote in the primaries. Your vote carries even more in the primary. And when you have, for example, like in the city council or, or commissioners raised last time, there was six candidates. So all of a sudden there you have plenty of option because in the general, you will only have two. And there might be some races, you literally only have two in the primary as well. But you have a bigger chance to make an impact, to help your candidate go through to the general if you get engaged early on and support them. So it's really our responsibility as believers to really get to know who's running for office. Uh, what are the values? What did they stand for? How have they, um, acted in the past? What did they stand, stood for in the past? And, and ask those questions. Most candidates are, are very open. They have town halls. You can, uh, talk to them and meet them and ask, what, what are your values on this and this and this? And, um, and that's a great opportunity to be engaged. Cause we need to, like we said, we need to vote. And we have these opportunities to make some big changes if we're just engaged.
Yeah.
And are part of the process.
And they need to be able to, uh, when I started running and there was, I was told by at least two that I should keep, uh, told by at least two that I should keep uh my faith low, not talk about my faith. And I just think that's, to me, that's that's not at all.
Yeah.
They didn't, we just saw the faith that was involved when we built this constitution. And so you need to find people that just uh not not afraid. You just can't be afraid. Yeah, I I uh I I put on my whiteboard in my office and it it comes from Patrick Henry. It said, you know, uh, fear is the passion of slaves. So we're called not to fear. And and I I I I I walk my days and and I work hard to not fear. I tell people I'm I'm only afraid of three things, spiders, snakes and redheaded women. And I may be kidding about the spiders and snakes, but but you just, you're not called to walk in fear. We're we're called to walk non in fear and you have to be strong with that and you just have to you have to have the faith that it's going to be okay. There it's it's some tough days. I mean, it's it's not always easy because you have people coming, looking at it. Great example, look at our federal level, they're in the process of breaking things that need to be broken and and the wailing and gnashing of teeth and all this stuff that's going on is just incredible. It's just absolutely incredible. Well, it's 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 no different on any level of government, it's just a matter of scale. We'll do something that takes away, when we uh sunset that tax, the wailing and gnashing of teeth over drug court. And it all of it went to drug court. I mean, I just it eh it gets on such an emotional level, there's just no common sense anymore. And I tried to bring it back to common sense and it doesn't, and that not everybody likes that.
No, I think common sense, it's a lot more uncommon than we think sometimes.
Well, it is.
Well, it's been a pleasure to have you with us, Rick.
Glad you asked.
Excited to have you share more about the the county government. It's we're on a journey, learning more and and knowing what's going on, how we can engage. And uh this is super helpful and um we're excited to see where God is leading you and and uh um see where God is leading leading this county. We, you know, so many people are deciding to, you know, pack up and leave, but I believe this is what God has called me to to live and raise my kids and and I'm going to fight for for them and for the next generation. And I I love to see people like yourself stepping up and saying, you know, someone's got to do something and why not me? And that taking that step of obedience and
Absolutely.
When people do that, we need to applaud that and and encourage more people do that. There's a lot of races coming up this year, school board, commission, uh city council and a bunch more. And maybe God is stirring some heart to get engaged in this. And I'm going to say this at the front and you will agree, I'm sure. It's not easy and not everyone's going to like it. And that's why we need to have the values that are unchangeable. Because if we don't have values, there's going to be a lot of people that want to change those values to reflect their values. And I think having that as your foundation that is always, it's it's the bedrock. That's how you can then say that I am who I am and this is what I stand on. Then people know what what to expect, so.
I had um when I first came in, if you paid any attention, when I first came in, there was uh, you know, animosity between the two sitting commissioners. And one was one way or was the other, and one was really concerned about me being there and and uh we got about, I think about five months in and and uh as we got more comfortable with each other, he sat in my office one day and he says, you know, I really owe you an apology. He said, you're you're not who I thought you were going to be. You're 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 passionate, you're conservative and you'll speak your mind, uh but you're fair. And then he said, and he said, I really admire that you're not afraid to talk about faith in your decisions. And I just went, well, why wouldn't you? Everybody. It's 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 how we were founded.
Yeah.
But I just I kind of took that as a nice compliment too, that we aren't, we're not here to live in fear. I can't say that enough and 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 walk your path and and do it in faith and and.
I love how you how you embody the the servant leadership, right? It's elected of some people said elected officials, but really it's elected servants. You are there to do our work and uh and that what it means in in the US Constitution, right? We, the people, we are the king of America, right?
Right.
And um which is so unique. There's no other country on earth that it works that.
On earth like it. That's why you heard in a previous one, we've been around, our constitution's been over 200 years.
Yeah.
What they say, the average constitution is 17.
Yeah.
Well, there's a reason for that is because we got it.
As long as we keep staying engaged, so we don't have this bureaucracy that then takes over and becomes its own animal.
I I got they and they talked about it a little bit and I got a I got a this whole living document idea. It's such a bunch of nonsense, you know, I the the nitwits in black black robes that come up with that are just uh out of this world. So we you hear all the time, well, we aren't uh we weren't aren't in carriages or any of this stuff. No, it's the principles.
Yeah.
I said, if it doesn't work, at least let's how why why don't we just try the principles again? And if it doesn't work, then I'll agree with you. But until we try the principles again and see if it does work, and you know, we're relieved, of course, it's going to work.
Yeah.
Because it's not about what kind of gun we were shooting and it's not about what we were driving. It's not how what we were doing our fields with, it's about principles. And those principles are still work today.
Yeah. Because otherwise, you know, the only free speech we can have is with an ink pen, no typewriters or computers, because they didn't have that back then, right?
I I know. I I don't think Washington texts the others and said, we're going across.
Maybe you posted it on Twitter first. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I have seen some selfies of Moses crossing the Red Sea.
Yeah.
But rumored is AI, but I'm not sure which one it is. If Moses have six fingers, it's for sure AI.
Right.
Uh, well, Rick, thank you so much. Can we pray for you?
Absolutely.
Aren't you encouraged to have people represent us in in the county like 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 Rick?
I thought.
Yeah. And I think Steve is in here as well. Uh, he was here earlier, Steve Farrell.
He's somewhere.
Yeah, so um Farrell, yeah, so one of the other commissioners was here earlier as well, so.
Steve, Steve, I get them mixed up.
Yeah. Um, but I'm I'm glad that you're not afraid to be here and to be here and share with us. And uh and I think God is going to honor that. I love your heart for the people of this county, that you want to be fair, you want to do it right, you want to stay true to the constitution. And unfortunately, these things are rare in today's society, so we want to honor that. And um may there be more like you coming down the aisle and filling up the uh from below like they talked about, right? We need to stack stack the deck in every every place where people who love the Lord, who have a a passion for people and for justice and integrity. So let me pray for you. All right, Jesus, we thank you for uh for Rick, we thank you for uh his yes in and saying yes to run for commissioner and and then be elected and his heart for this county. Uh, we we just honor that and we just ask for more wisdom. I thank you that he is who he says he is, Lord. I thank you that he is bold, living out his faith. And I ask that you would give him wisdom and the other commissioners too, that you would give them wisdom to, in a sense, rule well, to serve well the people of this county, uh giving them wisdom in regards to the finances and these issues of the heart, whether it's working with the homeless or uh or similar issues, Lord, where I pray that that your heart would come through, but at the same time that there would be the proper order of things, that what's meant to be for the government, what's meant to be for the church, what's meant to be for individuals, all those things that would be the right spheres for these things, Lord Jesus. And I pray that we would be a constitutional county that uh that is honoring what what our founding fathers worked out and that uh this document, those principles that have been successful for almost 250 years to soon, Lord, and that that would continue to be the the gounding light as the the founding fathers were were guided by you, Jesus. And we ask for just blessing over him, blessing over this county. We pray for righteousness and justice and integrity to be the cornerstone of this county and that we would see this place thrive as the godly principles and that uh that led to the constitution that those would would bear fruit, um because those are the principle that leads to life and righteousness and blessing. So we just thank you, bless him and and just give him the time to ride his motorcycle and enjoy things of life as well, Lord. But we just thank you for his heart and for his willingness to be here. So in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.